Well, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the February 2nd, 2022 Planning Commission. The main purpose of tonight's meeting is a study session related to parking reductions near frequent transit. Before the meeting, I'd like, before we move on to the agenda items, I'd like to acknowledge our remote meeting format. As with our previous meetings, the commissioners and staff will be participating via Zoom. During this Zoom meeting, the chat and question functions will not be available to use in order to ensure compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act. We have a public comments agenda item at the beginning of the meeting. This time is for comments on issues not on tonight's agenda. Please limit these comments to three minutes. If you have comments on an agenda item, we will welcome comments when that item comes up. Under Governor Inslee's proclamation 20-28 regarding open public meetings, this meeting will be held remotely. The Imagine Bothell notice, city website, and tonight's agenda all provided information to the public for providing comments. People wishing to comment were instructed to notify staff or provide written comments by 3:00 p.m. today, and we did receive a couple of comments. A video of this meeting will be streamed live as well as recorded and available for later viewing on the city's YouTube channel. A call-in number was provided on the meeting agenda for members of the public who wish to call in by phone to listen to the meeting. For our phone-in callers, during staff presentations, staff will make every effort to specify which materials they are referencing so that everyone can follow up. Those who provided advanced notice are able to make comments under the audience comment portion of the meeting. Email was encouraged as well and will be acknowledged. At this point, we'll take a moment to acknowledge the attendance of the commissioners. Commissioner Dodd.
President.
Commissioner Westerbeck.
President.
Commissioner Curd.
Here.
Commissioner Robson.
Yeah.
And Commissioner Augustusson.
Here.
All of our commissioners are present and accounted for. We do have a vacancy since one of our commissioners moved up to the council. Lastly, oh, in addition, Community Development Director Michael Cotterman and Senior Planner Dave Boyd are in attendance at tonight's meeting. So lastly, before we begin, I'd like to reiterate some meeting guidelines. For all meeting attendees, please speak clearly and pause frequently. State your name each time before speaking. Mute your microphone when, when speaking and unmute before speaking. If you are also streaming the live video feed, please turn the sound off as there is a delay. For commissioners, at specific breaks in the presentation, I will be calling on members who wish to speak or ask a question. If you want to speak, please indicate this by holding up a yellow card or otherwise getting my attention and I will scan across and try to recognize you as quickly as possible. And please mute your microphone when not speaking. So with that, we'll move on to our first agenda item. It is public comment. In keeping with Governor Jay Inslee's emergency proclamation 20-28 regarding public gatherings and open public meetings, the city has accepted visitor comment in writing as well as accepted sign-up sheets for those who wish to speak at tonight's meeting. Written comments submitted to staff no later than 3:00 p.m. were forwarded to all commissioners and are part of the record. And we did receive two comments forwarded this afternoon. So commissioners have had the opportunity to review those comments. This is the time for items not on the agenda. So Director Cotterman, please let us know, if there are any additional comments. I referenced the two. I don't know if you want to specifically speak to those.
Mr. Chair, those were the only two that staff received before 3:00 o'clock today, and I just checked and I have not received any additional ones since then either. So we do have those two that you should have received. If you did not receive them, let me know. But they, they were forwarded to you today. And we do have three speakers this evening. Two of the speakers will be talking to the, one of the items that was forwarded to you regarding tree canopy. And then we have a third speaker, Anne Agard, who asked to speak on the parking reduction item that's a little bit later on the agenda. And I see we have Kathy Ferberche and Kate Lunsford, who want to speak on the tree canopy. So let me bring, I'll bring both of them in at this time. We'll give them each three minutes. So Kathy and Kate, can you hear us?
Yes.
Great. Which one of you would like to lead off? You'll each get three minutes.
Okay, Kathy would like to lead off.
Okay.
Oh, hi.
You have three minutes.
Thank you so much. I'm Kathy Ferberche, longtime resident of Bothell and politically and environmentally active. I'm here with Kate Lunsford, who represents League of Women Voters and Snohomish of Snohomish County and livable Snohomish. She's a chair of livable Snohomish. Kate virtually wrote the policy that I sent you a link to a seven-page document. So we wanted to give you a time to kind of ask some questions and just get some orientation to our request, our, our ask. She is also steering the policy adoption, getting a lot of people to sign on to encourage the five representatives of Snohomish County Council to incorporate a tree canopy policy into their Snohomish County Comp Plan update. This will be a game-changing policy, but it's a very good one. So Bothell has proven their commitment to trees by their support of the creation of North Creek Forest, of which I'm a founding board member. Also their willingness to work with, or work with Shelton View, oh, sorry, to protect the Farmer Wayne Golf Course and to work with Shelton View Forest Stewardship Association. So all of these groups have a lot of volunteers that provide help for restoration stewardship. And they come to treat areas with an open mind and heart to learn and enjoy the benefits of trees. Most of the growth occurs in unincorporated Snohomish. I'm just on the, I'm still in the city of Bothell, but I'm in Snohomish County, but most of the growth that we're taking on is in the unincorporated areas. So this is an ordinance that really addresses those areas most impacted, but the city of Bothell will certainly feel those impacts. We believe it's important that the planning commission knows about this policy and encourages our council to sign the letter to Snohomish County Council endorsing the adoption of a urban tree canopy policy. So let me just backtrack a little bit. Snohomish County member Megan Dunn is championing the adoption of this policy. So we have, we have talked to every council member, at least I know we've talked to three, and she is totally on board. We think there's two more on board. So there's going to be a meeting on the 15th, so we are asking for various municipalities to sign the endorsement to encourage this adoption. So I just want to say one, how much time do I have?
You're pretty close to the end of year a lot of times, so if you could please wrap up, we'd appreciate that. Thank you.
So we hope that knowing about the policy will increase the likely endorsement by Bothell City Council. We intend to go to the meeting on Tuesday, and we didn't have time to get it together yesterday, but we want to make the ask them. They have a copy of the letter and they have similar information as you do. So I will, I hope that Kate will kind of fill in about the Evergreen Community Act in Washington State. That's what makes this possible. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Is it okay if I?
Oh, I muted. I'm sorry. I was muted. Kate, you also have three minutes.
Thank you. Okay, thanks a lot. My name's Kate Lunsford. I'm speaking on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Snohomish County, P.O. Box 1146, Everett, Washington 98206. And I am here tonight to ask the, the Bothell Planning Commission to recommend to the Bothell City Council the endorsement of our letter to the Snohomish County Council supporting the urban tree canopy policy that's being proposed by C.M. Dunn for adoption into the Snohomish County Comprehensive Plan Update. You did get the letter from, from Kathy, so it is just a review. It is a policy that is based in the Evergreen Community Act and is already exists in state law. It's been reviewed and revised by legal counsel and by county staff. The policy gives jurisdictions the ability to tap into technical support from the Washington Department of Natural Resources to respond to climate justice. And the tools include tree assessments, tree inventories, forestry plans, surface water management, public education, and guidance on ordinances and incentives. And it is similar to, the Evergreen Community Act is similar to the tree city designation, but is specific to Washington State. There, I know Kathy's letter made some other points about the value and the, to economic benefits and to, and to health and I just wanted to reiterate that there have been state and local groups that have signed on. There are 20 now. And she listed them in her letter to you that include Climate Alliance of Snohomish County, Futurewise, Puget Soundkeeper, Physicians for Washington, Physicians for Social Responsibility, Interfaith Climate Action.
Snohomish, City of Snohomish, gotta say that.
I was getting there.
Okay.
So last, last night, we, we got a unanimous vote from the mayor and the city council of the city of Snohomish to also sign on to the letter, which means that there is now collaboration between cities and community groups, and that is a powerful way to guide our, our county government. And it's also a way for us to celebrate each other with some common goals. We have local and state groups agreeing with some local jurisdictions on the importance of protecting and enhancing urban tree canopy. This is a great starting place. So thanks for, for taking a look at it, for considering it. We hope you'll support this idea with signing by the Bothell City Council. So thanks and thank you for your service.
Thank you for your comments. So Dr. Cotterman, a question for you, I guess. We, we just completed our planning docket or discussion of the planning docket for the upcoming year, and I don't know how, how this would fit into that, if, if at all.
I have not had a chance to read through the materials that we received on this. So I was going to suggest if the commission would like, staff can take a look at that and come back to you with, you know, a little bit more information, what the implications might be for the city and where that might fit within a work program. I would suggest at this point, if it, if the commission wishes to make some comment to the city council, that you could have some discussion about that this evening or wait until your next meeting. I don't know if the council will take action next week. They may want some additional information as well. But you could, you could talk a little bit about it under new business this evening, if you would like to do that and give staff some direction, if you want us to come back with more information. And then well, I guess we won't be meeting again before the docket presentation to council. So you could, I guess, Mr. Chair, you could share with the, with the council on that evening. Or staff could share whatever the discussion is from the, from the planning commission. And you can all determine if you feel you have enough information at this point to provide some direction or feedback to the council. That was a rather lengthy response to your question, Mr. Chair. I'm sorry.
I think I got the gist of it. So when we get to new business, I will ask the commissioners if they would like to, we'll, we'll discuss this, see if there's a motion to have staff look further into it and talk about whether we should, what we should say to the council, what I should say to the council in the upcoming meeting around the docket. So thank you both for your comments. I think we've all heard what you had to say. We did. Commissioner Robson, do you have a question?
Yeah, if I can ask something just really quickly. I know that we don't generally respond to people. We have, you know, a precedent of not responding to people who address the council directly. And so I'm not able to, you know, it would break precedent for me to speak, to address the speakers directly. Do we have a precedent? Is there a formula that we usually follow if we are to address the council that way in support of other people's agendas? Is there maybe a format that we usually follow? How, how, what kind of thing might a group be looking for as an endorsement of an, of a larger policy, if that makes sense?
There have been a couple of instances, and the most recent one is around the diversity, equity, and inclusion position at the council where the commission did express, well, and prior to that, regarding bringing on someone to fill in for retiring senior planner. So the commission does have a history of discussing issues. Having a smaller group put together a letter, now, of course, within the constraints of open public meetings and all that, but, and then I read the letter to the council for the D E I position. So, you know, the, the commission does present, and I, the chair on behalf of the commission can present a letter that the commissioners have developed around the subject.
So depending on the group's timeframe, they might want to, they can sort of maybe give us a sense of what they were looking for in terms of support, and we could shoot for something like that to get a letter around that, or would we strictly follow our own agenda? Would we try to work with them? How does that work?
Mr. Chair, if I, if I could suggest, I think, I think the, the discussion is, is the good questions, and I think there's good discussion there. And I'd suggest that we, we take that up under new business.
Okay. So we will do that. Now, should the, these two individuals stick around for new business?
Certainly can if they, if they want to, yes, because that's coming up pretty soon. I think it's the next item on the agenda.
Yeah, our next item is adoption of minutes, which is typically very quick.
Yeah.
And then we'll get to new business. So if you want to stick around a couple of minutes, there'll be some discussions.
And I do have one more person in the attendee room.
Okay.
And I don't know if, I believe it's Anne Agard, and I think she wants to talk on an item that's later on the agenda. So Anne, is that you there?
Yes, I, I am, I'm in on Zoom, but I can't get the Zoom to open. It says to enter my name and email. And for some reason, it's blocked. I don't know why I can't watch the meeting.
I'm not sure either. You should be able to, to log in through that, but we can hear you. And you wanted to speak on parking reduction, and that, that item will be coming up in just a few minutes. So I'll bring you back in at that point, okay?
Okay, well, if it's possible to get me, I would like to watch on the Zoom, and it just immediately goes to this where I have to enter my name and my email, which I assumed was something that you needed to know who was there.
Yes, that's correct. So if you could try it again.
But the continue button won't do anything.
Sometimes it takes a little while to actually respond.
Well, I've clicked it since 6:00 o'clock and it still isn't opening.
I'm, I'm sorry. I don't know what to tell you at this point. It's, I, I'm not sure what to do from here.
Well, there's the old standby, exit and come back in again and see if that helps.
Yeah, you can, you can try that, or you could.
Okay, I did that once, but I'll do it once more. And then if not, I'll just call back in.
Okay. Are you using the link that's on the agenda?
Yes.
Okay, that should be working. Others have, it hasn't been a problem for others so far at least. But I know, sometimes, sometimes we have problems with it and we never quite know why, Anne. I'm sorry about that.
Okay, okay. So I will go out and I'll come back in on the Zoom. And, and, but you're going to adopt your minutes before you have more public input, right?
That's correct. Yes.
Okay, yeah, that'll give me a few minutes.
We'll bring you back in during the study session. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Bye.
Bye-bye. Okay.
All right. So I believe there are no further public comments. No one else waiting to comment. Is that correct, Director Cotterman?
That is correct, Mr. Chair. The only other person I have in the attendee room is Mr. Stanger, and we'll bring him in when we get to that, to the parking item.
Okay, that sounds good. So with that, we'll move on to our next agenda item, which is the approval of the minutes. We have before us the minutes of the January 19th meeting. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
I move.
All right. Okay, there's a motion to approve the minutes from Commissioner Westerbeck. I think I saw Commissioner Curd raise his hand. Would you? Okay, it has been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the January 19th meeting. Is there any discussion around those minutes?
I did find one typo, Mr. Chair. I'm, I'm surprised you didn't pick it up. Because you usually find those. It's a, it's a Scrivener's error and we'll fix it.
Okay, sounds good. I'm a little slow these days for other reasons. All right, so it has been moved and seconded that we approve the minutes of the January 19th meeting. All in favor of approval of those minutes, please indicate. I see all commissioners raising their hand indicating approval. We have unanimous, unanimous approval of those minutes. So the minutes of the January 19th meeting are approved, and we will move on to our next agenda item, which is new business. We have had a suggestion of one item of new business, the urban trees ordinance. Director Cotterman, is there anything else before we launch into that discussion?
I just, I think I heard a couple of questions from Commissioner Robson, one having to do with how that's conveyed to the council, and you responded to that, Mr. Chair. The other I heard, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner, is how, you know, about engaging with people that provide public testimony. And that's something, again, protocol is that we don't do that during public comment, because it tends to stretch out the public comment. If we have a lot of people, it just, it gets a little out of hand. So the, the opportunity is exactly what we're doing this evening, and, and we don't necessarily have the people still present, but that's the opportunity for the commission to have any follow-up discussion about what was said during public comment. And that's usually just among the commissioners. We made a little bit of an exception for that this evening. So that's all I wanted to add, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you. So what I heard was a request from these two individuals that the commission support the adoption of the urban tree ordinance and before the council, we urge the council to support the urban tree ordinance and sign on to that as an action to the Snohomish County Council. Is that consistent with what others heard?
That's.
Mr. Robson?
Yes, that's what I, I'm understanding. I just, I wasn't clear on what kind of if they were looking for a particular thing for us to do, if there was something for us to sign, if we were supposed to add it to a docket item to the, you know, when you go to meet. So I, I was just wondering if they are allowed to speak to that as, kind of, excuse me. So I just would like some more due diligence.
Okay, so I'm going to look to Director Cotterman on protocol. I see you raised your hand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And if I get this wrong, one of the speakers I'm sure will correct me on that. So my understanding is what, what they're asking of the commission is that you send, make some comment to the city council in support of the council signing on to the endorsement. This is a policy that's been drafted that would be added to the Snohomish County Comprehensive Plan. So it's not part of the countywide planning policies that I believe are already adopted by the county council in Snohomish County. But it is, it would be part of the Snohomish County Comprehensive Plan. And again, as one of the speakers pointed out, the main benefit to Bothell is that a lot of our future annexation area is in Snohomish County. So there's, you know, that's looking forward in terms of what we would like to see there. So the only action by the commission this evening, if you wanted to make any comment, recommendation to the city council would be through a motion. You could simply do that and direct the chair to bring that up during the docket discussion in two weeks, which would be after the presenters speak to the council next Monday.
Okay, so I guess reiterating what Director Cotterman just said, I would invite a commissioner to make a motion kind of summarizing what we heard. And again, what I heard was a request, the motion would be that the commission supports the Bothell City Council.
Endorsing.
Endorsing the urban trees policy, which is before the Snohomish County Council. So does someone, would someone like to make a motion? Typically, the chair doesn't initiate a motion. Director Robson, Commissioner Robson.
I, I motion for the planning, the other planning commission to support the urban tree initiative in Sno, in Snohomish County and express that to the city council.
Is that, is that to support the council's endorsement of that?
Indeed, it is. Yes, that is. Exactly what I meant.
And I'll, I'll make sure we get the name of it precise. I don't have it in front of me right now, but.
Excuse me for the dead air. I'm still writing.
It's the, it's the urban tree canopy policy. Thank you.
All right, so I took a little bit of liberty, but this is what I heard for a motion that the commission supports the urban tree canopy policy and requests that the council support that policy as it's introduced before the Snohomish County Council. That, okay, is, is there a motion? So we have a motion, a second, and then a discussion under Roberts. So is there a motion to approve that?
I believe you have a motion from Commissioner Robson.
We have a motion. Okay, so is, okay, so I tried to restate it. Is there a second for that? Commissioner Curd.
I second the motion.
All right, discussion around that. Commissioner Dodd.
Just want to be clear, since we're doing a little less review of this than we normally do on things we recommend to the council. So this offers resources. It's not actually adopting a tree ordinance, correct? It's, it's offering resources to help craft such an ordinance and amongst other things. Is that, that's accurate? I see lots of heads. So cool. I just wanted to be clear on that. Thanks.
Okay, Commissioner Augustusson, then Commissioner Westerbeck.
Hi, Sarah Augustusson here. And thank you, Ms. Ferberche and Ms. Lunsford. Apologies for name pronunciation. I'm definitely excited about a concerted coordinated effort here. I do think we should ask a couple of questions to make sure we're doing our due diligence. And I don't know, Director Cotterman, if I should address these to you or to the speakers who have come today. I'll just ask the question and maybe we can see how best to address it. So my first question is, it seems that Snohomish County and its jurisdictions are already doing a lot of the work that's in this policy. So what would be the number one change between business as usual and the new policy? Would it be creating a new element in the Snohomish County Capital Facilities Plan or something else?
And I'll ask one of the speakers to, to talk to that, because I, I have not had a chance to review the policy or the materials that we received today.
I'll take that one.
All right, Ms. Lunsford, please.
Thank you. Thank you for the question. I, I have to leave very soon to go and do this at the Everett City Council, but I did want to get a chance to say that that the, the current ability for Snohomish County to, to protect and enhance urban trees is sorely lacking. There is an ordinance in place, but there are holes in the ability to monitor, to oversee, to advise, to, to educate homeowners. Trees are cut down. No trees are saved. Significant trees are not being saved. So this would just give better infrastructure. It would give a framework for the ability to choose more interest, infrastructure for the county to be able to guide protection and enhancement of urban trees planting. protection and enhancement of urban trees, planting, saving. It's just not happening now with the current regulations. And I'm really apologize. Thank you so much for giving us this opportunity. And I'm sure Kathy will have more to say if you have questions. Thank you. I have to go. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Is there further discussion amongst commissioners? Commissioner Westerbeck?
Thanks, Commissioner Westerbeck here. I had a chance to read through this a few days ago kind of quickly, so I didn't really get to take it all in. It seems, you know, okay with me right now. I I'm very, I try to be very wary or be very critical of anything that would prevent us from creating more density within areas near services, transit, schools, jobs, the sort of efforts we're putting in right now, the emergency mental housing studies and various bills in the legislature right now. So if any, if 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 this in any way makes it more difficult for people to, for example, create infill housing in within the GMA area, that would give me some pause for concern. Because I love trees. I've always grown backpacking and camping and stuff. But I'm a big believer that we should have nature right on the edges of our towns and cities that we can access, that we should preserve. Therefore, you know, I'm not, I don't endorse the idea of sprawl. But these places that are close to to all the handy stuff that we like, like a fifteen-minute city idea, I'm okay with those things. As long as we are replanting trees in streets and parks and things like that, just to make up for it, which I think most codes like the city Bothell code has a tree ordinance where you have to replace trees, you know, in kind, or I don't know what the ratio is. But that's my only, my only misgiving. And so I probably want to give it one really good last read before I endorsed it. But I don't, I didn't see any what I would call big concerns or red flags in my ministry. So I just wanted to express that.
Commissioner Curd.
Thanks, Chair. And I just wanted to kind of maybe give a little bit more context in response to Commissioner Augustin's comment, because I do share the same concerns of just kind of it's not really our jurisdiction. So I don't want to, I don't have all the information. And it took me a year and a half to read Bothell's comprehensive plan, so I haven't even really started on Snohomish Counties. But it does, from my review, it does look like this policy is mainly targeted towards changes to the comprehensive plan for Snohomish County to incorporate ideas and concerns about tree canopy. And so I don't think it would be to the same level as like city. Many of the cities in Snohomish County do already have pretty rigorous tree code. But in unincorporated areas, I think that this is meant to sort of bridge the gap a little bit. It doesn't identify specific policy changes, which I think is the concern that we might share adopting or making a recommendation for something we're not really in control over those recommendations. But just reviewing some of the attachments, it looks like the policies and goals that are outlined are fairly general and they're consistent with, you know, Bothell's tree canopy and management strategies as well. So I I've looked into it a little bit because I did, I have shared the same concerns. And I think I'm convinced that this isn't targeted, targeted approach as much as more comprehensive plan structuring. So that's my two cents.
Do we have a sense for when the Snohomish County Council would be acting on this?
Well, if it's part of their comprehensive plan update, it would be sometime in two thousand twenty-four.
So.
Unless it's an amendment that they're working on for this year. And and I don't know.
Okay, and I see our Ms. Furbushay perhaps has a little more information on that?
Yeah, I just, there's a meeting on February fifteenth where I think some, that's going to be a decision made about this particular adoption of this policy. And Carson, you're right on. It's broad sweeping. We're trying to tilt the direction towards saving trees with the look at equity and climate. So, but I have the same concerns. I'm sorry to getting off the question, but I would, we're looking for that endorsement letter to be signed, just saying, we like this policy. We encourage you to do it. And I think it's great to have cities. Cities are much more strict than counties. We want to get our county to be observant of some of the things that the cities have done to protect trees. So the fifteenth.
And looking at the materials, though, it does say that it's part of the twenty-four update. So I suspect that the meeting on the fifteenth is more of the scoping about whether to to include this as they move forward on updating their plan.
That's my understanding too. And the letter just strengthens the resolve of having all for Tara, Snohomish. I mean, all of these different entities sign on. And so it just strengthens our hand. The fifteenth. So that's, that's the ask specifically that might come around again for something else. And really, the purpose of us coming was to educate you guys. And you've done well more than what we ever expected. You're taking this in hand. You're looking it over. I, great question. So the, I'm going to try to ask the council to sign on to a letter that says we encourage you the adoption of this. It doesn't let, it doesn't make Bothell liable for anything. You're not adopting the same thing. It just is a note of encouragement.
So if the meeting is on the fifteenth of February, is it February fifteenth? So the docket would be too late.
Yeah, that's, I was looking at my calendar here as well. And even were we to act tonight and adopt a motion in support, I would not be speaking to the council before their meeting on the fifteenth.
So in that, in that case, Mr. Chair, I would suggest a couple of options. If the commission does take action this evening, you do have an item before you that's still on the table. We could probably go one of two ways. That could be an email from you to the council on behalf of the planning commission for expressing whatever action is taken. Or when this comes up next week at city council, I could also convey that the commission has taken some action on it with, or both, whichever you prefer.
So I'll throw that back to the commissioners.
Or for that matter, Mr. Chair, you could speak during public comment at the plant, at the city council next week.
Yes. So we do have a motion on the floor. It's been moved and seconded. We're in discussion of that motion. And some options, I guess we have a couple of options. One is to defer and spend a little more time studying this. Director Cotterman did indicate we could ask staff to evaluate it a little more, which would put us past this fifteenth deadline, but perhaps give us a little more information. Another option is to adopt the motion and take an action, either my email or in public comment. So Commissioner Dodd.
I think we should make a decision tonight, given that the county councils will be meeting on the fifteenth, and we really need to relate to the city council on the eighth, if we have a strong preference either way. So I don't think it makes sense to delay because that kind of makes it a moot point. And I think just having Director Cotterman just bring up briefly, like planning commission said X, Y, Z, whatever we end up saying as a commission, is fine. You know, I think that should be sufficient. Personally.
All right, additional discussion on the motion on the floor? All right, seeing none. So it's been moved and seconded that the commission supports the urban tree canopy policy and requests that the council support that policy with the Snohomish County Council. And I'd ask Director Cotterman to perhaps wordsmith a little bit. Been moved and seconded, so I'll now ask for a vote on that motion. And all in favor of that motion? I see. So it looks, we have, we do have unanimous consent. I see all the commissioners raising their hands. So Director Cotterman, you do have that motion?
Yes.
Excuse me?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We will make sure that we get the wording that, we'll, we'll look at the tape and get the exact wording. And then.
Well, perhaps not the exact wording, maybe a bit art, more artful wording.
I thought it was pretty artful. We'll make sure we get it, we get it right. And then you and I can talk about how you want to convey that to the, to the council.
All right, thank you. And thank you, Ms. Furbushay. I hope I'm close enough on pronunciation.
You're doing beautifully. Thank you.
All right, so the the commission did hear you and act, and we thank you for bringing this to our attention.
Thank you very much, you guys. Thanks. Have a good evening.
All right. So any other new business before us, Director Cotterman?
I don't believe so, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
All right. Reorganized my papers when I wrote now and I moved my stuff around. Okay, so that concludes our new business for this evening. We move on to our study session. The and that study session is around parking reductions near frequent transit. So Director Cotterman, would you like to introduce this?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will introduce Senior Planner Dave Boyd and Senior Planner Mike Stanger, who's coming down the virtual hall right now as we speak to join us this evening. And I will also note that Anna Guard wants to speak on this, did make it back in. It looks like she's here by phone and by Zoom. So hopefully we'll get one of those to work and and we can bring her in to comment after the staff presentation and any commission questions. So with that, I'll turn it over to to Dave Boyd.
Great, thank you.
Thank, thank you and good evening. I will jump right into my presentation. I've got a short presentation. It's going to cover some of the same ground. But focus on some of the the direction that we're hoping to get as far as approaches go. And go as we move forward here. So purpose again, the purpose of the overall code amendments is to expand the provisions that have already been enacted for reducing parking requirements in our code. To, and specifically, the this all started with the last round of parking reductions that were done in response to House Bill nineteen twenty-three state mandate. And at that time, planning commission the, the state mandate required us to apply parking reductions near frequent transit to market rate housing within a quarter mile of frequent transit. Planning Commission recommended extending that to a half mile. But when we took it to council, we recommended that we take another look at that and and look at whether we, whether that would justify some affordable housing requirements. So the council agreed with that and and had us bring it back to planning commission for consideration. They did adopt the, the, the provisions to meet the state mandates. We also would like to have have planning question consider additional reductions in some cases as justified by parking study, which we've discussed. And I'll go over kind of where we've been on this to date. And to consider affordable affordable housing provisions where they, where we do have the opportunity to apply them. So and specifically tonight, purpose is to to review and provide direction on the proposed approaches that were outlined in the, in the memo. Just a little more background. The Bothominus Code has had provisions for transit-lated parking reductions going back to the nineties. And then in two thousand twenty, we adopted this state mandated reductions. And as I said, with the idea of going back and revisiting at least the the notion of extending the market rate reductions from a quarter to a half mile. And I just like, before I dive in here, I'd just like to say, we've also had a pretty robust discussion of of parking regulations in the docket discussion. So in light of all of that, taking all of that feedback back in terms of crafting these proposed approaches. So just to recap where we've been on on some of these issues, we discussed whether we should apply these parking reductions to future transit in light of sound transit, bus rapid transit lines and the potential extension of the Swift Green Line down Bothell Everett Highway and Bothell Way to downtown and the campus. And there was support for that. But still to be done is crafting the criteria for those. So so we need to come up with a solid criteria that would apply those in a fair way. So that's still to be done, work to be done. We discussed the, the notion of having further reductions justify, as justified by a parking study. Wanted to clarify that that the the provisions that were passed in two thousand twenty only require affordable housing to do a parking study for reductions below one space per bedroom. And that was what was written into the code that that would apply to the low-income senior housing that is being proposed by Imagine Housing. We also discussed having some flexibility in what those parking requirements would be and also what the potential portable housing requirements would be as justified by parking study. And that's something that I think we need to do additional analysis to come back with a solid proposal, but we're looking for for input on the approach of, on, on all of these things as, as an approach. And then we did have a fair amount of discussion, discussion about the need for a third-party review of a parking study. And that also, we heard fairly clearly back about some concerns about the cost of that. And we think that we are, will be able to craft criteria for the parking study that that wouldn't require a third-party review. So, but that still needs to be fleshed out. We talked about allowing reductions with a parking study in the downtown and canyon park areas. Those areas already have the parking rates have already been reduced to factor in transit and parking and, and other parking reductions. But further reductions have been requested for projects in those sites. So there, there is a certainly a desire for that and and also an opportunity there to go beyond the existing reductions and take advantage of the opportunity to get some affordable housing with those. And then there was also some discussion about whether we should look at reductions beyond that half-mile buffer. And we do have one application for rezone and parking reduction just outside the Canyon Parks, the Swift Terminal, so just outside the half-mile radius. And another application for parking reductions outside the half-mile radius from the Beardsley one ninety-fifth stop in, in the North Creek subarea. It appears that the, the North Creek Project may be able to get the reductions they need from the existing parking reductions that existed even before the two thousand twenty reductions. But it is, it still is an example of a, of a project, the kind of project that we might want to address in these vote amendments. And then at the last meeting in December fifteenth, I introduced this notion of considering reductions for smaller infill projects, not, not just larger multifamily projects. for smaller infill projects, not not just larger multifamily projects as as commission did with corner lot duplexes. So this could apply to for ADUs within a radius of frequent transit and also other small multiplexes besides corner lot duplexes, just to keep consistent with approach there. And again, we heard support for that and and that would be one of the one of the approaches. So the memo included four different approaches or or aspects of of approaches to consider that we'd like to get Planning Commission feedback on. The first one is to as we did with the affordable housing reductions passed in twenty twenty to allow a first tier of reductions by right and then further reductions as justified by a parking study. So again, with the Imagine Housing Project as an example, that that project would have been allowed to go down to one one space per bedroom without a parking study. But they are actually, the the provisions allow them to go as low as point three spaces per unit with a parking study, which is something that the the applicant was very willing to do. So this would be can, so the idea is to kind of use that same approach in in these expanded parking reductions to allow a certain level by right and then further reductions with a parking study. So it's consistent with what we've done to date, provides developers some flexibility. And it would involve developing a simple criteria to reduce the cost and on a potential need for third party review. So, for example, in King County, we could establish some criteria for using the King County Right Size Parking Calculator and which could be done by an applicant without necessarily hiring a traffic engineer and could be reviewed by by staff without the need for a third party review. That's the direction we're suggesting with this approach. And I think what I will do, I'm gonna, after each of these approaches, I'm gonna stop sharing and open it up for for some discussion.
All right. Thank you, Senior Planner Boyd. See, Commissioner Curd first would like to discuss.
Great. Thanks, Chair, and thank you, Senior Planner Boyd. One of my questions about this tier is how far reduced from the base tier would a parking study allow? Let's say it's downtown and it's right next to a surplus sound transit parking lot. Would it be possible for a parking study? If or the calculator, King County Right Size Parking Calculator, to recommend a really low parking ratio? Would that be allowed? Or is there absolute minimum that this tier would recommend as well?
Well, the the one example we have to go by is the Imagine Housing Project, which was able to, with their parking study, get down to the point three spaces per unit. And that was largely because the project, most it was for senior housing low and 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 very low income senior housing households, most of whom don't have cars at all or and and or don't drive. So the parking was mostly for to support staff and and visitors. So so yes, depending on the situation, you could get a substantial reduction.
Other commissioners?
We can certainly come back to these questions after we go through the the approaches, before approaches in the memo and one new one I want to.
Yeah, I I do want to be sure that you get, to the extent we have a consensus on direction that we provide you that direction. So not seeing anyone right now. Yes, Director Cotman.
Just a procedural question, Mr. Chair. So I I wasn't sure how much the commission is going to get into providing direction after each of these pauses. I don't know if you want to hear from the the public comment, Anna Agard, before you get too far into the discussion on this.
Excellent point. So so Dave, why don't you go through the four approaches? We'll we'll have some clarifying questions as appropriate from the commissioners. When when you're done, we'll invite the public comment. And then after we hear from the public, we'll weigh alternatives and see if we can come to a recommendation. Does that sound like a reasonable approach to commissioners? See, nodding heads. Yes. So let's let's do that. So Dave, after each one, just pause for clarifying questions and then we'll seek the public comment.
Yeah, I I was gonna suggest just that. The next approach was to craft these regulations to require to have affordability requirements for developments of five or more units when when the when parking reductions are are included. Again, this would be consistent with other affordability requirements that we've adopted in the city. And it would exempt the very small infill projects. Any clarifying questions here?
Commissioner Westerbeck.
Thank you, Commissioner Westerbeck here. I can't remember, do we clarify what size the infill projects had to be to be exempt? Is that like under five and four units or fewer, something like that? Or we think it's based on lot size? I don't recall if we discussed them.
Now, the current, all of our current affordable housing requirements apply to projects of five units or more.
So it is the five or four. Okay, got it. Thanks.
Okay, move on.
Seeing no other comments.
The next approach I wanted feedback on was to add reductions for middle housing options near frequent transit, similar to the ones adopted for corner lot duplexes. This would also apply to ADUs near frequent transit, other small multiplexes, cottage housing, if we if we craft cutting out cottage housing rules. I think I'll just jump in if there if there are questions, but I'll go ahead. There there's just two more of these. The other one would be to change the existing parking reductions just so that the that they all are more consistent internally. We incorporated some of the inconsistencies in the city code. And then we, back then, we didn't make any effort to to tweak the pre-existing parking reductions for better internal consist consistency. So and this that work could apply to the the two private code amendment requests outside the half mile radius and other and other similar projects like that. And I think there may be a potential, some potential for simplifying having fewer categories and and categories that are a little bit more consistent. And then I believe the last one, which is new, it was not in the memo, but it occurred to us after the memo went out that in light of the discussions about the desire to to reduce parking requirements citywide and also the discussion about the the parking studies that were done for downtown, Planning Commission could consider a recommendation to reduce the central park downtown parking requirements to their original level, which was point seven five spaces per bedroom with a max of, well, actually, originally, there was no max, so it would have kept going up at point seven five. But very early on, we realized that we didn't want to have a disincentive for doing larger units. So we established a max of two point two for three units or higher. So basically, it was point seven five for studios and one bedrooms. One, one and a half for two bedrooms and two point two for three bedrooms or larger. And that's as the parking study, the phase one parking study, we did basically supported that. It showed that the actual parking utilization was around averaged around point eight or I think it was per bedroom. But and and actually proposed a somewhat more graded scale rather than just number per bedroom. But we can certainly go back as low as that original without doing any further environmental review. That was all covered in the downtown planned action ordinance. And what what council actually did is that they determined that every unit should have at least part one parking space. So we now have the current code is one space for studios and one bedrooms, one and a half spaces for two bedrooms and two point two for three bedrooms. So that's one other potential change that we could, that planning commission could consider recommending to council. So with that, opened it up for further questions and clarifications, any public comment and and then further mission discussion. I'll stop here sharing.
All right. So do any commissioners have clarifying questions or comments before we hear from the public? Or alternatively, we could just allow the public comment. Commissioner Westerbeck.
Thank you. I wanted to ask for clarification because I use the code a bit myself in my work. I've always had this running understanding of we've got a downtown sub area code that has different parking requirements than outside the downtown sub area. It sounds like some of these proposals are getting, if if I'm not mistaken, would take the rest of Bothell. Well, I guess Canyon Park also has its own parking ratios. So we have kind of three, if I'm not mistaken. The rest of Bothell, downtown sub area, Canyon Park sub area. Sounds like this would take the remainder of Bothell outside of downtown sub area and maybe outside Canyon Park to these ratios that are much closer to what we have in downtown. I know they're not a perfect one for one, but it seems like we're getting closer to that with the one point seven five per per the state, point seven five per unit or one per bedroom. Am I getting this all mixed up? But it sounds like we kind of have those three, three areas of the city.
That's how what we do have now. We have we have different parking regulations for for those three areas. The what we're proposing is still tying these parking reductions to proximity to frequent transit.
Okay, okay.
So it would not apply to to the entire rest of the city. So it but it would.
Just those areas, this half and quarter.
Yeah.
So it's sort of like a a fourth overlay of parking requirements sort of over what we already have. Because some of us could fall downtown and it's going to be, oh, there's no change because it's in downtown. And some of us going to be, oh, here we're outside downtown, but the new ratios apply because you're within a quarter, quarter, half month.
And we already have that to some extent.
Okay.
The the transit reductions that date back to the nineties apply more broadly. The the threshold for for frequent transit is much lower than than the the state mandated threshold. But but it only allows those reductions for projects within an eighth of a mile of those bus stops. And and those bus stops are are that that would qualify or are scattered around the city. So one one thing that I am going to work on before we bring this back is is a better better mapping of those. So far, we've only done the quarter and half mile radiuses around the 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 areas that that meet the state, the more recent state mandated reductions, which and most of those stops are in Canyon Park and downtown, but those the the radiuses extend a little bit outside of of those areas.
So just a one last little thing. I really support the idea of bringing back the the original downtown sub area ratios and applying those to these half and quarter mile. It I know it changed in the middle of when I was planning my project and I had to scramble to find another parking spot on a really tiny site. And it was a real challenge. And I know that was basically, I joked that it was people came out with their torches and pitchforks because there wasn't enough parking at Six Oaks. It's quite a quite a legacy. They were upset that there was parking in the street. So this is a tangent, but I'd still think that parking management downtown is really important. So we take take control of that resource. But that's, you know, I know that's a tangent. So anyway, I support that that point seven five per bedroom, two point two max. Because I think that within a half mile of transit and particularly downtown or and also particularly around Canyon Park, that we could go, you know, even with even less required parking than we would have, say, half mile from a suburban neighborhood where cars are still more necessary. So support that. Just want to get those comments in. Thank you.
Okay, other commissioners clarifying questions or comments? And Commissioner Westerbeck, I've often joined you on the parking management tangent. So all right, I I think our next step here is to invite the public comment. So Director Cotman, would you like to invite Ms. Agard in?
Thank you, Chair. She should be joining us momentarily. Anne, can you hear us?
Yes.
And we can see you. You made it in.
Well, you are correct. If you just keep punching the button and going back and forth, I think five or six times, it finally worked.
Well, I'm glad that worked. Thank you for joining us tonight. You have you have three minutes, Anne.
Thank you. I I'm going to discuss just briefly these parking restrictions and parking reductions. And I'm really focusing on the discussion about that it would that would extend these further, these minimum, these minimum parking restrictions citywide and particularly as they may or may not apply to this missing middle and duplex housing. I'm particularly addressing this colored map that was in your agenda packet and the pink colors and the yellow colors. And I think in some cases, the half mile is totally appropriate. And in other cases, it is not. Because you use the term buffer and and accessible to high really major transit facilities. In these cases, as Dave pointed out, these are your major high transit facilities. But in fact, they are impossible to reach. And I specifically look at the yellow lines. As you go out here on East Riverside Drive, anytime you've got to cross the Sammamish River, it's impossible. You're talking about several miles before you can get to a transit stop. So I think you're going to need to put something in here that implies that it is realistically walkable or accessible. And this would mean that you would have to eliminate water bodies or critical areas such as steep slopes that are often wooded and heavily with with shrubs, you can't even get through them. So so please look at that. It sounds, it sounds innocuous, but it is totally and completely impractical when you, particularly when you have to cross this Sammamish River. And so I want to then, so my question is, why is this term buffer used anyway? It implies some sort of a protection. And it isn't any kind of protection. It is something that should be real. And it isn't any kind of protection. It is something that should be realistically walkable. And for the most part, accessible. And secondly, I think it needs to be clear that this is a major transit stop. With a bus service every fifteen minutes for at least five hours of the day during the peak time. So. There needs to be some definitions given to it. Um, the second question that I have for you is uh this missing middle, which I'm very interested in. Uh, I also am an active member of the League of Women Voters, as is Kate Lansford. And um, by the way, I totally support what you did this evening regarding the tree canopy and Kate. But I've been following this House Bill seventeen eighty-two and the Senate Bill fifty-six seventy. On which uh three of our council members testified. And these two bills both address the middle housing. So a middle, missing middle housing. So my question for you is. I know that this is on your upcoming agenda in February. And it is on the council's planning document. For, I believe, the. Whatever their next council meeting is in February, twelfth, twelfth. Uh, of of uh February, about then.
That'll be the fifteenth, and your three minutes are up, so I'd ask you to bring it to closure, please. Thank you.
Fifteenth, and so my question is, are you going to, if these bills pass by early March? Are you going to continue uh to pursue this, whether and I'm, I'm assuming they're going to pass, they're supported by the governor? Will you pursue this uh bill ahead of the? Guidelines that will come from the Department of Commerce onto in terms of implementation? Uh, and how might the city of Bothell plan to address this? And I would hope that the planning commission would have some input on this. To council as well as their suggestion to include the middle housing. Thank you. Any question?
Thank you, Ms. Zegard. Dave, you want to make a comment about the use of the word buffer, just to clarify?
Yeah, yeah, I can, I can address um. Uh, several of those questions um. So. Uh. That the use of the buffers, uh, that's actually uh correct. The buffer is kind of a term of art that's used um. In mapping, uh, and so that's, that's how I just tell, tell our GIS folks uh what I want to see. I want to see a half mile radius around these. Frequent, so they, they, they refer to it as a buffer. Uh, but um. Ms. Zegard is absolutely correct. It, it's really a uh. Uh. A measure of accessibility. And we had this discussion uh when we passed the state mandated um. Uh, uh reductions. And talked about uh. Um. Using a half mile walk shed instead of a uh. A half mile radius. And um. With, with the understanding that there are s- situations where the the half mile radius uh will involve. Uh, a much longer than half mile walk. The, the direction that the commission went then was, uh, they recognized that uh. But felt that they wanted to. Uh, get the maximum uh amount of of parking reduction. And uh, and so that was the decision to go with the. Uh, half mile radius. Some of the state legislation, I haven't, I'm not sure if this is still in the bills that are, as they are currently framed. Uh, we've been monitoring that, trying to monitor that. Uh, I did have some guidance on. On that question uh about whether to go with a walk shed versus uh just a radius. So. Uh. So we'll have to continue to watch that and and um. And uh. And discuss that some more. I think that's certainly a valid thing to can, to. To consider um. And that also relates to the question about whether we're going to wait for commerce guidance uh once these bills do pass. Um, we could, um, we could put this all on the back burner uh, but. I think we will have a pretty strong idea of where um, you know, uh. Uh, what, what we need to do and uh. The bills also typically are, they allow communities um. Until the comprehensive plan deadline or longer uh to implement, uh, but the direction that we've got in the city is that we wanted to move ahead. Uh, uh, ahead of that. And and other communities across the state have uh. Kenmore as well, uh, well along in their. Uh, middle housing amendments. Olympia did a very comprehensive. Uh, um, code amendments uh even earlier, so. Um, so we don't have. Have to wait. We can, we can, and we don't have to just meet whatever the state mandate is. We, we can go beyond that, so. Um, that's certainly a deci- a decision to make. Um. One other question of the criteria for frequent transit. So the, the provisions that were passed in twenty twenty do, do have a um. A, and actually, the, the previous uh existing ones uh do have criteria for frequent transit. The, the more recent ones. Are slightly different for each category, and that's one thing we might want to. Um, try to. Uh, make them more similar, and we can do that as long as we're not. Getting below whatever this, the state mandate was for any given category. But basically, it's similar to um what was suggested. Um, uh, four stops per hour for twelve hours a day is uh, it was the state. Uh, definition for frequent transit. The, the older uh city uh rec. Um, reductions allow a two percent reduction for each stop. Uh, during the morning and evening rush hours. Um. So um. Uh. But that's a slightly different. Um, standard, uh, and what I would propose. Is that, that we, we. Take a look at those, look at how we can. Maybe make them uh somewhat more similar while not taking away any entitlements that, that the, those current provisions. Uh, do give uh property owners.
Thank you, thank you. And I believe another thing we discussed around the question of the buffer is um. Simplicity of defining it. You know, once we start carving out different things, it can be quite challenging. So uh, there was some value in keeping it simple. All right, um, thanks, Dave. Uh, so commissioners, uh, questions, comments before we go. Item by item through the approaches. Dave, seeking guidance on? Commissioner Augustin.
Hi, Sarah Gustafson here. Thank you, Chair. I think my question is, how do we as a commission plan to proactively address? The questions that um resident in a guard brought up and that. Certain members of the council have asked us. Are we going to continue with the parking management? Strategy as part of the recommendations to the council? Or are we going to leave that behind for right now and perhaps? Um. Maybe use some anecdotal evidence from cities that have already implemented similar strategies because I am hearing a lot of concern that. About accessibility. And fears that accessible spaces will be lost. And if we want this to be popular policy, how are we going to do this?
Commissioner Dodd.
I think I would clarify that. No accessible, no ADA spaces will be lost with this. The same amount will be required no matter what. Um, that's something that I pay pretty close attention to because that's how my dad goes anywhere. Um, places, you know, if anything. Um. And, and this is maybe pie in the sky, and I'm sure I'm gonna uh make uh David Mike go, oh, God. Um, but I would love to see a little bit more accessible spaces required in general. And then less other parking to preserve what some people might be using, you know, because definitely. There are some businesses in town that have one spot near the door. Um, and that can make the difference as to whether somebody can actually go or not. Um. So that's something I'd love to see to address both the concern of folks with, with mobility issues who needs parking close to where they're going. Um, but at the same time. That's more on the, the commercial side of things. Um, when it comes to residential, I think there's going to be um. You know, it depends on the, the type of building being built, and that's where it comes into um. I don't know, I, I, I like our reductions on, on residential side. I think on the commercial side is where I have a couple of concerns.
Okay, other Commissioner Kurt.
I was gonna wait until um. Old business, continuing business, whatever we call it. But um, in response to your question, Commissioner Gustafson about um parking management. I worked with Director Cotterman um after our last meeting to craft a um. Statement to include uh in the planning docket discussion, and I'm sure that will be forwarded along. Um, I feel like I captured it pretty well, uh, but it, I now realize it wasn't um. It wasn't sent out to everyone. Um, and so. I'll look through my email maybe and see what the exact language was and. Pull that up, but I just wanted to make sure. It's on the record that um we addressed it and that was forwarded as a recommendation from this body to council.
Director Cotterman.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, so I actually have that uh. Language right in front of me. Commissioner Kurt, because I've been working on the. Materials for the docket presentation to council today. Uh, so let me get to the right page there. This is under. Other code amendments, uh, which is um item number seven. And the language is update citywide parking standards to reflect best practices and more efficient use. And then parenthetical, e.g., parking management. And the uh staff proposal is to defer that. Work. Until we get the comp plan update done because that will give us more policy direction at that time. And then it's also related to the downtown parking management. Uh, task that's been in the docket for the last couple of years. So, and I, and I may have mentioned this before, I don't recall, but we are tending to have some. Some items will highlight for further discussion and direction from the council. When we have the docket discussion with them in a couple of weeks, one of those is on missing middle housing. For a lot of the reasons that the commission has raised in the last a couple of times, as well as what Ms. Zegard brought up earlier this evening. Is we want to make sure that regardless of what the state legislation ends up being, we have direction from the council as to uh what they would like us to do with this. Going forward. And that may be beyond what the state is proposing, or it may be. We don't care what the state is, you know, gonna do. This is what we want you to end up with at the end, and I suspect it'll be. At least as much as what the state is, is proposing at this point. Uh, the other thing, excuse me, one of the other issues that we're gonna ask for additional direction from them on is parking. Because that has been uh such an important issue for the commission, and obviously we've been spending a, a, you know, a good amount of, a good deal of time. Uh, addressing that. So before we go too much further with additional parking. Um, code amendments, we want to make sure that we have clear direction from the council as to how, how much they would like us to do. Um. Overall, as well as how much they want us to do now versus some point in the future. So just to give you a couple of highlights on that. And I want to thank Commissioner Kurt for his help in crafting that language. He had uh. Was very eloquent in capturing, I think, what the commission was looking for there.
And, and one other point I would add, uh, when this item comes back to us for action. There will be findings and recommendations, and we can certainly insert in that a finding. That the commission finds in order to implement this. Certain actions around parking management will be required, and we have time to think about what that might be. But we've done that before, insert a finding ahead of the recommendations on uh, just to make sure that the uh intent of the commission is. Recorded to the council.
And if I could just add one more thing, um, Chair.
Sure.
Uh, just a reminder that, so you did receive earlier today an email that was forwarded to you from the Snohomish County. Transportation Coalition or Snow Track. I just wanted to remind you, since we just did public comment. That that is public comment on this issue that you also received today, and they were supportive of reduction in parking. And there was more in their letter, but I know that was the, that was the main thrust of the letter.
Thank you, Derek Cotterman. So other commissioner uh comments, questions, discussion? Commissioner Westerbeck.
Thank you, Commissioner Westerbeck here. Thank you, Chair. Um, I just briefly would, would add to Commissioner Dodd's comments um. In my work permitting designing buildings, um. The, the building code uh usually will dictate uh for anything but a residential, single or duplex. Single family duplex home or townhouse. Um, if there's a certain number of. Parking spots, uh, you even up, even three or four, you have to have a van accessible. Uh, we wouldn't call ADA in the code, it's accessible uh space. Um, and so. I would say, even if we got to the point as a city where uh we said, hey, you, you know. Do you want to need any parking at all for some reason downtown or something like that, I, as we even have with retail right now on Main Street? Um, we could eventually change the code to say uh. If you have four more units or five dwellings or something like that, you have to have at least a uh, an accessible. One accessible spot where people can be dropped off or can use. Maybe, maybe it's not dedicated to a, a resident unless they needed it. It was a, a place dedicated to someone who had a disability, but otherwise um. Like a, a load unload zone or something like that. It would probably be a new, a new line of code, but just, just an idea that. So no one, because I feel very strongly, people with accessibility concerns should be able to get everywhere anybody who could walk or ride or scooter could get. Um, but as Commissioner Dodd said, but that means we free up other, other space uh by, by having less parking. But we make sure that they are prioritized and where they need, we can, in some ways have the best of both worlds. But uh, the code um could be, we could, we could tweak the code, the existing building codes and provide. Make sure that we're providing. What people need to get closer, who, who need those spots.
Thank you, Commissioner Westerbeck, Commissioner Gustafson.
Uh, Sarah Gustafson here, but did um Senior Planner Boyd have his hand up?
Uh, yes, I just wanted to um make a note of the. Generally, uh, relative to uh Commissioner Westerbeck's comment, uh, um, the. The zoning code does not address uh accessible parking. That's uh addressed in the building code. Bothell adopts the International Building Code and the International Residential Code. And uh, to my knowledge, we do not amend them. Um. Uh, and other jurisdictions too, or well, at least Seattle does. I don't know about other jurisdictions in, in Washington, but um. Um. So it's kind of a given, and, and so we let the building code take care of that and um.
Right.
We take care of uh, uh, things like parking minimums.
And that's partly what I was saying, probably too roundabout a way that. The, the building code does require. Um, accessibility in many cases, so. We, we probably, we should definitely have it on our radar, but um, it's frequently taken care of by the building code. Um, in many cases.
Thank you, Commissioner Gustafson.
Um, thank you, Sarah Gustafson here, and I. Want to bring forward some of the things that Commissioner Westerbeck and Commissioner Dodd have been saying. Ways to bring more accessible parking to Bothell, maybe as a trade off for other kinds of parking. Um, would it be possible to put a formal finding in? Um, our materials for the council that would recommend consideration of both. Increasing accessible parking and perhaps looking into family friendly. Parking. Are we at that point yet, or is that? Or in the future?
Well, the findings would accom- accompany the recommendation, which would be when this comes back to us. I think if we give. Uh, Senior Planner Boyd. Direction, he, he would craft some findings, which we could then either amend or supplement. So um. Yeah. That's kind of, yeah, we're at that point, but we'll be back at that point again later as well.
So, and, and I'll be keeping tabs on all of these. Recommendations that, that are uh potential findings uh that maybe aren't actually addressed in the code amendments.
And just to, just to reiterate a point, I think it's important to keep in mind for the commission. Uh, when you're talking about accessible spaces, as Commissioner Westerbeck said, that's in the building code. And the building code is not under the purview of the planning commission. So you can certainly. Put something like that in your findings, uh, but that would not come back to the planning commission.
Thank you.
And Terry, it's, it's possible that um we could add. Uh, go beyond what the building code. Uh, go beyond what the building code requires for accessible parking and and add provisions for family accessible parking uh. But um. I guess one thing that I've been uh been trying to uh. Keep this particular effort focused on is parking reductions near frequent transit. And then the discussion we've had about um reviewing the citywide parking regulations, um parking management. Um, those all can go into into findings accompanying your recommendation here. Uh, and also, uh, we are putting it into the into the docket also as as an item for council to consider.
Sounds good. I don't want to say get too sidetracked, just we started swerving over there, so I'd bring that up to the building code. Dictate something different. Appreciate it though very much.
So other questions or comments around the presentation and what we've heard? Or shall we begin walking through the approaches and giving uh Senior Planner Boyd uh. Direction or affirmation to what he's presented? So Dave.
Would it help to um pull those slides back up?
Yeah, I think that's where we are right now, that I think it'd be useful to walk through them and try to give you as clear a direction as we can.
Okay. Start at the beginning. The approaches. Uh, so the first one is the approach uh of. Allowing a certain level of reduction uh by right, uh and then further reductions as justified by parking study. And that's partly to be consistent with uh previous approach to provide some flexibility. And also to uh address the concern about um about uh the cost of of uh doing parking studies. And um and that will require some additional work on our part to to develop. Uh, criteria that will um make it possible for us to implement that uh without. Uh, involving multiple traffic engineer reports and reviews.
So questions or comments on this approach, Commissioner Kurt?
Thank you, Chair. I'm sorry, I still have the same question as before, because now I'm more confused. When I see the information in our packet saying the state mandated options by right. And then a lower option, and it's clarified to be point seven five spaces per unit with a parking study. So point seven five is ultimately the minimum. We cannot go further than that, or if a parking study determines that. Point five units or point five um spaces per unit is a an appropriate minimum. That that's not going to be allowed because it's capped at point seven five, I'm I still need some clarity, sorry.
Okay, so. The state mandated reductions were um. We we you the the state gave us two different levels that we could uh adopt. Uh, one space per bedroom at or point seven five per unit. Um, and we chose to do use those as tiers, uh basically. Um, and but we we can certainly write code that would um. Uh, go below the state uh mandated minimum. We can't, we can't be above it, but and I and I don't think there's any appetite for going above it uh now, but um. And. And it goes it goes against the simplicity, but we we could potentially have a, well. We we could have more than even more than two tiers, I'm hoping we don't we don't need to go there. But I guess what I'm saying is that we could have, one of the questions was um for one of the issues was, should we uh. Consider a variable parking requirement that would basically be whatever the the parking study uh shows is appropriate. And then craft uh whatever. On a case by case basis, craft what the affordable housing requirement would be in that case, in that situation, but. Um, but basically, right now, I I'm just looking for a kind of a affirmation that that a tiered approach. Uh, uh, makes sense, has support of planning commission. And then we can work out the details of exactly where those tiers are as we go forward.
Director Cotterman.
Thank you, Chair. So just to tag on to what Dave said tonight, so like you said, tonight, we're just looking for you, are you okay with the two the tier system? But I think it would also be helpful if you could give us some indication of some numbers that you'd like us to look at. And we can come back to you and say how those might play out. So if you have numbers in mind. You know, we'd like to hear those. Sorry, Dave.
So commissioners, do you have numbers? I I think there's a pretty clear consensus on a tiered approach. I I don't see any clarity on numbers beyond what's here. And and for another.
Let me rephrase the question if I could, then Chair, just to to help us move forward on this. Would you like us to look at something lower than what we've talked about so far? Just even just a nodding of heads.
Commissioner Westerback is nodding his head and raising his hands, so.
Okay.
I don't I don't need to comment, I'm just always going to be for lower, because I that's my my point of view.
I I'd already counted you as a as a yes, Commissioner Westerback.
I saw Commissioner Kurt's head nod as well.
And I thought I saw um at least, I I didn't see Commissioner Gustafson, but I did see Commissioners Dodd and Robson. Nodding, and now I've got a nod from, okay, so so we can we can look at some different numbers there as well. We don't need to get specific tonight, that's that's enough direction, I think, for that.
Okay, and and just a minor nip, perhaps not necessarily mention. We talk about the King County Parking Planner, and I would assume, of course, that the city can use that in Snohomish County, should anyone ask that.
Uh, no, that is actually a good question and a bit of a problem, because uh it doesn't extend into Snohomish County. Um, and so that's another thing, we would need to. Uh, that that could be one approach that would be used in the code, but uh we'd need to look at other uh. See if we can develop other criteria.
I wrote down the same question, Mr. Chair, so I we we will look into that some more.
I I thought I had included that in the memo that the that that it don't own is limited to King County. Um, I'll also follow up with the Snohomish County planners to see if if they have any. Uh, plans to adopt anything similar, that would be convenient, but.
But absent.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, sorry for jumping in, absent any. Thing stating otherwise Snohomish County, one would think that another methodology could be adopted by the city. Is that fair?
Yeah, and I think that's what I'm saying in terms of coming up with criteria. I mean, we may decide that, I mean, worst case scenario would be. Uh, that in Snohomish County, you you just have to do a a. Uh, hire a traffic engineer and do a study, but um uh we'll look for other alternatives. That are more kind of elite. Try to be as equitable as possible across across the counties.
And I think the challenge is with the King County uh calculators, it's based on GIS layers that are specific to King County. So and and so we'll look into whether or not. Snohomish County has something similar, or if King County would extend it to include. That extra little portion of Bothell that's a King County city, you know, into the Snohomish County portion.
There are a couple of cities that cross the boundary. So that question, I know Auburn does.
Auburn, Pacific, Milton, and Bothell are the only four in King County that cross county boundaries.
Yes.
We're the only one that crosses the Snohomish County.
Yeah.
Yes.
Um, I mean, we could, I cannot, I hadn't even thought of this until just now. I I could send a GIS request to our our group and say, can you come up with a parking calculator? Um, I don't think that would be received. I mean, I think they'd love the idea, but they have a very full work program already.
Well, and maybe there's a way for us to just fill in that. Actually, you know, if if King County can give us access to the calculator, maybe it's just a matter of us filling in that data too, which may or may not be that involved. But you're right, they've got a full plate as well. So anyway, we'll look into that and see if if not that, we'll figure out another tool.
Okay, I'm always an advocate for simplicity and consistency across the city.
Yes, me too.
Okay, you got enough on that one, Dave?
Yeah, let me go to the next one. Um, and here uh we may want to pull in um. Get some input from uh Mike Stanger. So do we want to uh stick with the uh affordability requirements uh for developments of five or more units? Uh, be consistent across the city? It would exempt uh this small infill projects, but not um medium, small infill projects. And I guess one um minor concern, uh the state legislation, some of the state legislation. Uh, one proposal is to um allow up to six plexes, uh so we may want to uh. Have have to address uh that issue, but um but in general, um. This is what we're looking at, and and we have done uh some preliminary analysis. And the affordability requirements uh based on kind of the the numbers that that we've been kicking around to date. Um, uh, indicate that an affordability requirement somewhat similar to what we did in the SR five. Twenty-two affordable housing um overlay when we we changed the zoning from GC to SR five twenty-two. Uh, was five percent at sixty percent uh EMI. So I think we would be in that ballpark based on uh preliminary uh analysis. And um Mike can certainly. Way, and I don't think this image is really helping the discussion too much.
So Commissioner comments, questions, feedback? Commissioner Kurt.
I'll always have some feedback. Um, I would encourage staff to look at six plexes. As being uh in the realm of missing middle. Um. Yeah, that's all I'll say on that. Um, just so that small um infill type um development can be. Um, exempted from um some of the the stringent requirements. Um, I think that uh affordability requirements should be applied um for larger um. Larger structures, though. Uh, that makes a lot of sense, uh matching the thresholds uh so that everything is consistent is also a great idea.
Commissioner Dodd.
Just for consensus purposes, I agree, six plexes would be part of missing middle to me.
Commissioner Westerback.
I will be the third to concur with that, and um I'm gonna bring the anecdotal data, because I crunch a lot of numbers on. What development works and doesn't work um for. Small to medium sized developers and and myself and um. Uh, inclusionary zoning where we require uh affordable units and a percentage of units works. Better the bigger you get, and it it becomes really difficult to make those those affordable units work. Uh, and and to even like make the the spreadsheet the pro forma that shows that development can be built. For reasonable prices. Below certain number of units, and it's it's a factor that includes land costs and construction costs and parking requirements. So there's it's a it's a whole stew, you can't apply a a particular number like, oh, this starts at twenty units or something. But in general, I agree with the six plexes because um. You have to kind of get a a certain critical mass of units for inclusionary zoning to to pencil out. So um just the the math is relentless, so I'll concur with that.
Okay.
One other factor that we'll look at in that is um. Uh, the smaller projects, uh, if if the requirement is that uh ten percent of the units or even. Or or even if it's five percent of the unit, uh and it's a project that's less than uh ten or twenty. Uh, units, then we're into fractional units, and that's where we uh give developer the option of of um. Uh, paying in a fee in lieu. Um, and there's some pluses and minuses uh to that. Um, uh, it doesn't produce the affordable housing on the site. But it uh goes into a pool that we can use for uh for affordable housing projects that are gonna um. Uh, fill that the lower affordability or more likely to fill the more low lower affordability levels. So so we'll do some more uh analysis of that one, that's taken to count those concerns.
Okay.
So Chair, just a chair.
Yes.
Just sorry to interrupt, just for my own clarification, Dave probably got this, but I'm not sure I did. So the comment I heard was six plexes are part of missing middle. Regardless of whether they're considered missing middle or not, is the commission saying? That anything above a six plex, I'm sorry, anything at six and below would be exempt from an affordable housing requirement? So it would apply to seven and above instead of five and above? Is that what I'm hearing? Okay, I just just wanted to make sure, thank you.
And and I think we we may look at. At uh some other possibilities, Kirkland, for example, in their missing middle um amendments that uh recently done. Uh, have applied that to uh ten projects of ten or more units, so. We'll we'll come back with a uh recommendation that that takes that into consideration.
And depending on what comes out of the state legislation, we may look at having to change that across the board as well.
Right. Uh, okay, and this one, actually, I think we've kind of addressed already in in that discussion is that um. That we would apply some sort of uh parking reductions to the missing middle uh housing uh. That is uh near frequent transit, so. I don't know that, I'm gonna go ahead to the next one. Um, okay, this one has to do with the the. Whether commission would like us to uh look. Into tweaking the um the older uh transit reductions uh to uh provide more consistency. Uh, and um without taking away any uh entitlements that are currently in place.
Commissioner Westerback.
So just so I understand, are you saying um because these are outside the the half mile zone? Should we apply what we're the the new thresholds we're discussing? For these new projects, or maybe throughout the city, or just for these new projects, or?
I guess I'm saying the the.
I misunderstand.
The the older parking reductions apply to uh much less frequent transit service.
Right, okay.
They they have a a gradated um reduction two percent uh for each uh trip. Within two two uh within the morning and afternoon rush hours. So you can actually have a fairly. What would quite a bit less bus service uh than than the state mandated mandated uh requirements. Now require, so it would apply in more places throughout the city. Uh, but the, like I said, the radius is only an eighth of a mile, um eighth of a mile, uh eight, so. So it's it's gonna create little bubbles around uh most bus stops uh where they're where they could apply.
Like you talked about earlier, okay, I'm getting better now. I mean, I would support that in part because we're seeing more and more people use micro mobility. E-bikes are are catching on like wildfire, scooters, normal bikes and stuff, so um. I would say uh it's not quite as hard to get to the stops, maybe even as it was ten years ago. So I'd support that.
I would also note that at least one of those, the one on Bothell Everett Highway is likely to be within quarter or half mile of a future transit stop because with the extension of the green line down there. And it would go right by there. The other one, I'm not sure. There will be another stop at my favorite location underneath the interchange of five twenty two and I four oh five. Whether that would be within the half mile of that, I'm not sure.
I think I did look into that and it was also just outside of a half mile from there as well. Plus, there's no way to get there from here. And even though we did float to sound transit, an idea of a elevated pedestrian walkway to the south end of North Creek Business Park from there. I don't think that made the cut.
And we are, we did propose, and I think they're they put it in their long term plans for a stop at one ninety fifth.
Actually, no, that's in there in the current plans. I mean, long term in the sense that it won't be there until twenty twenty six.
Right, it's it's in the concept. It's yeah, it's not gonna be built as part of this this initial phase of the four oh five BRT.
The the other thing that we we did add, they were, they struggled with where would the buses that that turn around at campus do their turnaround? Once the stop is moved off of the campus and onto Beardsley. And I advocated for having them do the turnaround in the North Creek Business Park to serve the business park. But they opted instead for the to do the turnaround and the and the connection with the four oh five BRT at the interchange. Win some, you lose some.
Back to the back to the proposal on Bothell River Highway. That would more likely than not be within a half mile of future stop, correct?
Presumably, yes, because it's close to the intersection with two forty. And I'm assuming there'd be a stop somewhere within that general vicinity.
Yeah, and and I think you've heard in the past, strong support from the commission to look towards what future service will be, not be locked into today's. So let's be sure to reflect that. Commissioner Kurt.
Thank you. Yeah, I want to refer to this type of discourse as what's the word that I was just thinking of? Kind of corridor planning instead of just individual points and stops. And I'm a proponent of the corridor style planning instead of individual stops. Only because the surrounding parking minimums are just so high. And so if this is what it takes to get reductions in the right spots and have them be kind of future planned as well, because we know that transit follows areas that will make transit work. I think that this is, it's provisional, right? So my support for this is is provided that we don't do, you know, mass reductions across the city elsewhere. Which is what I would prefer. But in this context around affordable housing and reductions based on transit. I I am a proponent of the corridor style plan.
Okay, any other discussion on this particular approach or Dave, do you feel like you've got enough feedback to move forward?
I think that's a great feedback to move forward. I would, the the corridor question raised an issue with our current or the the older transit reductions. They basically say that they apply where there's transit service within six hundred and sixty feet. And then said, and then went on to say that we that the code doesn't define transit service. And so they they tried to make a case for them being within six hundred and sixty feet of just a route. You know, where you can see the bus go by. And we said, no, we think that transit service means someplace where you can get actually get on the bus, not just go by. So so in that sense, it is focused on the the stops. But the top, the stops do tend to line up along corridors and generally they're within those quarter and half mile radius. So I think it works out in the end. Okay, I think there's just one other question.
Yes, your new one.
And we've already had some input on it. Commissioner Westerbeck. And that's whether you'd like us to look look into recommendation of going back to the original downtown parking requirements or or a similar gradated scale. And in the next, if you do want to take a look at this, I I will provide that phase one parking study and 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 the the recommendations that that they made for you to consider. And those apply not entirely throughout the downtown sub area, but to the downtown core, downtown neighborhood and downtown transition districts.
So I'm gonna guess where the commission comes in on this. I I think there's general support in that returning to those earlier lower numbers. Is that, is there consensus on that or do we want to discuss it? I'm seeing. Yeah, so Dave, I think that's a yes on that one.
Great.
Anything, anything else on this item? What do you have the direction you think you need?
That, no, that is the direction I think we need. And we, if we kind of kept with our, the schedule of going with the first continuing this, bringing this back monthly, that would be on March second. So we will target that date as we get into this. If we have to adjust it, we'll we'll include that in the in the March imagine notice. But we'll target March second to bring this back. I don't think we're quite ready for public hearing. What I'd like to do is at that time, based on the feedback I got here. Have some preliminary code language and perhaps even some preliminary findings based on on the discussion to date. And then and then go into a public hearing at the following meeting.
All right, great, thank you. Thanks for bringing this to us. As you know, there's considerable interest on the part of the commission on this and thanks.
Bet. Thank you.
So with that, our next item is unfinished business. Director Cotterman, do we have unfinished business to discuss?
I don't believe so, Mr. Chair, unless any of the commissioners have an item they would like to bring up.
Looking across, not seeing anyone leaping in. All right, then moving along, reports from staffs.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was gonna give Mike Stanger an opportunity to say something since he was here all evening, but he's he's already left the building. So just want to thank him for being here this evening. Just a few items I wanted to highlight for you very quickly. Some of them I've mentioned before, but just as reminders, the application process is open for board and commissions. So encourage anyone you know that you think would be a good member for the planning commission. We also have one opening on the landmark board. And I don't, we don't have any on the shorelines board. But and I'm not sure about the other boards and commissions. These are the only three that I care about, so. The the application process closes, I believe early February or middle of February, interviews by the council will be on March eighth. And they're the like the speed dating, they're very short, very quick. As you all know, you went through that process. And then the the council will make appointments on March fifteenth. So the one open position we have will take their seat immediately, which would be the next night. Otherwise, any other appointees would be the April, first April meeting. Commissioner Dodd, looks like his question.
Yes.
I was just wondering, so last year was the first time I believe that all of the interviews were like broadcast live on BCTV before they'd been private. Will that be the case again this year?
That's a good question. I'd forgotten about that. I presume so. I haven't heard, but I presume it will be the same as last year.
Thank you.
City Hall, we have tentatively set a date for reopening City Hall to the public. That is Tuesday, March fifteenth, the Ides of March. I hope that's not a bad omen.
Beware.
And we will, we are going to be open initially at least for only three days, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. Those are the busiest days typically at City Hall. And other colleagues I've spoken to around the region that have opened already saying that their walk-in traffic is extremely light. So we're not expecting we'll have a lot of folks in the door, but we want to make that available. So obviously, we'll continue to monitor what's going on with any new variants that might come up and other things and that date may change. But for now, we are planning on being open to the public starting March fifteenth.
And what what does that mean for meetings? I believe in the past, you've said the council would, I'll just say go live first with commissions following sometime after that. Is that still the plan and are there any dates?
There are no dates on that as yet, so I haven't heard that the that the council is ready to go back to in-person meetings. And what we'll do is we are set up, we'll be able to do hybrid meetings. So we'll have in person for the council as well as, you know, board and commission members and staff. And then any public who want to show up, but they can also join virtually. But I have, I don't have any dates at this point and I'll certainly keep my ear to the ground and let you know if I hear anything as far as is when that might happen. Commissioner Dodd has an active hand tonight.
All right, and this is an awkward question. But I I think one of my hesitations in coming back in person would be what we've seen with other municipalities and school boards and things that are back in person, where there are sometimes people who don't want to follow masking requirements. Especially in Washington, we have pretty pretty stringent ones. So is that, I guess I I wanted to express because I'm sure you don't have the plan right now, but that there would be a plan for how to handle that. If somebody sort of refuses to stay masked while they're in in chambers.
Yes, we would require them to be masked while they're in chambers. And that's that'll be a requirement for anyone in City Hall, including staff. If you're not, right now, the rule is if you're if you're in your cubicle by yourself, you do not have to wear a mask. If you are talking with anyone, you you know, even in the doorway of your cubicle, or certainly in the same space, you need to be masked. And that will be with the public as well. We, if public come in to the building, we will offer them masks to wear. If they do not, we will ask them to leave the building. And in the case of board and commission meetings, we always have a uniformed officer on duty in the lobby during those times. So I hope it would never come to that, obviously. But we would have an enforcement, someone to enforce that if necessary.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Great.
And I think, and that raises a, you know, just generally, I think that raises a good question about how would the commission feel? How comfortable would all the commissioners feel about coming back to in-person meetings as well? I think that's a discussion that the council is having. So if, you know, if the commission, when we get closer to that, if you'd like to have that discussion, once we have some possible dates. And if you're still not comfortable coming back, I can certainly follow up on that. And it may be that we just delay that if, you know, if the commission would prefer to wait a little bit longer or you know, anything like that, we can, we can certainly discuss that as well. And we'll see if the council is gonna make that a requirement of all the boards and commissions or if they leave that up to the discretion of each one. So more to come on that, I'm sure.
All right, thank you.
Keep your fingers crossed. The missing middle webinar, you all received the information on that. I know a couple of you have signed up. You've let me know. That's fine. We're not gonna do a potential quorum notice. So you don't need to tell me because you're not gonna be interacting during this. And we know you'll all behave yourselves and, you know, not have a follow-up meeting about it without telling us. Also wanted to let you know, if you're not able to attend, but you're still interested in it, I did ask, one of the council members had asked. Because he's not gonna be able to attend the webinar, but wanted to know if there'd be some, if it'd be available later on. And what I was told is that there will be a video available for a short time afterwards. But only if you're a registered participant. So if you're not able to attend, but you would still be interested, then I would suggest you still go ahead and sign up. And then hopefully you'll be able to access that video for some period of time. The council last night approved changes to their protocol manual. And it includes board and commission, meetings with board and commissions twice a year. So the plan is to have a joint meeting with half of the board and commissions, boards and commissions. I'll get the English out eventually. At one meeting and then have another meeting with the other half of the boards and commissions. And then I believe, Mr. Chair, if you want to mention the imitation you received. That there'd be some other interaction that's happening as well. And then there'll also be on every agenda now, we're going to have an opportunity for boarding commissioner reports. So that would be an opportunity for the chair of of that border commission to come and give a report. Ask questions or, you know, however you want to use that, assuming very brief, about ten minutes at the beginning of the meeting. But there'll be other opportunities for that and, you know, certainly beyond the docket. We can create those opportunities for for the chair of the commission whenever you'd like to share something with the council.
Yes, and as as Director Cotterman indicated, I received just this afternoon a doodle invite to indicate when I might be available to there there'll be meetings with the the council seeking to meet with the chairs of the various boards and commissions. And they're looking for available time. So as this had, it came in late, I didn't read email for a chunk of the afternoon. But I will keep you posted as that's developing. And presuming that there is time between the meeting being scheduled and while we meet, I'll ask if there's anything in particular that you all would like me to be sure to to bring to their attention.
Thank you. And then I I did some, I had some questions for our legal counsel. After the last meeting, there were some, I I was confused. I wasn't sure because we opened the public hearing just by the chair, opening the public hearing. But we closed the public hearing through a vote. And then I know in the past, there've been some questions about whether there has to be a vote to adjourn the meeting. And then also votes to extend the meeting. So as far as the public hearings, the way we did it last time is fine. The chair can open it just by opening the public hearing. And then there should be a vote to close the public hearing for for the record. Likewise, for adjourning the meeting, do it through motion and vote, that's fine. As far as extending the meeting, however, there's nothing that I found anywhere in your bylaws or and in fact, the council took it out of their protocol manual a year or two ago that they no longer have to vote to extend their meetings. So you don't have to either. Now, that may be good or bad, because then the chair can just keep on going if you want to. But I'll leave that up to the discretion of the chair, but you do not need to vote on an extension of the meeting. And then just very quickly, some of the things that are gonna be coming up before you in the next couple of months. And I'm I'm putting together the 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 overall work program or schedule for the rest of the year of when we anticipate items coming to you. This will be based on whatever the council approves as far as the docket, but some of it, we have an idea of and I'm starting to piece those together. And I hope to bring that to you in March at your at your first meeting there. And as Dave mentioned earlier, we we probably have the parking at your first meeting in March. Come back with missing middle at the second meeting in March. We may add some other things there. We're not sure yet, but next week you've got the missing, I'm sorry, next meeting, you've got the missing middle. And a briefing on the transfer development rights feasibility study that was done for Canyon Park for the bus base there. And there's no action required for from you at that time. It's really just to kind of give, bring you up to speed on the work that's been done. And what will likely be coming to you as far as code amendments related to the TDR program at a future date. Because that will come back to the to the commission. We had a good meeting last week with the Landmark Preservation Board on a request from the Shantini Restaurant to do a roll up door, which we were not able to permit initially because of some changes to From uh the Shantini Restaurant to do a roll-up door, which we were not able to permit initially because of some changes to the. Downtown Historic Preservation Regulations a couple of years ago. Uh we were able to work that out through a director's interpretation. And we're gonna be doing a code amendment so that all future decisions like that will go through the Landmark Preservation Board, if they're within the downtown special review area. Uh and the board was very supportive of the director's interpretation that we use to to um. Allow for this roll-up door in this particular instance, as well as the approach that will be bringing to you as the planning commission as a code amendment. Um hopefully sometime in March or April. Uh I mentioned the work program already, the King County and Snohomish County, countywide planning policies will just come to you with a briefing on those. There's no action required by the commission on those. Uh we just wanna make you aware of them, because that is one of the. Those are two of the things that we use to to help develop our policies and our comprehensive plan. We have to be consistent with those. Uh and we we get to work with both counties on that. Snohomish Counties is adopted by their county council. And I believe they took that action last month, or it's coming up this month, but it's it's, it's about to happen if it hasn't already. In King County, it's a little more of a, an involved process. It goes through their Growth Management Planning Council, uh and then to the county council. The county council has approved them on behalf of the unincorporated area, so now it goes to all the cities in King County for ratification. And ratification is by thirty percent of the cities, representing seventy percent of the population. It'll be going to our council for ratification on March fifteenth. Uh and uh we'll do a briefing for them at that time, and so we'll just bring the same briefing to you on the King County policies, and then we'll come back another time with. Snohomish County, just to kinda alert you to everything that's in there. And the bike plan will be coming to you at some point. I don't have a date yet. We're still waiting to hear from Public Works, but I know that they've been making some progress on that. So I'm anticipating that will come to you sometime in the first quarter, hopefully March, April at the latest, but uh we'll let you know about that. But it is, it is scheduled to come to the Planning Commission uh as soon as Public Works is ready to do that. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions if there's something else that I missed that you're curious about. Uh and just wanna thank you as always for all of your, your attention and and your input. Uh good feedback tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And I I just, I did look at the, the deadline for uh board and commission applications is uh February eighteenth.
Thank you.
And that applies to the two commissioners whose terms are expiring as well.
That we hope will reapply and be reappointed. Not to show any favoritism whatsoever.
At least one has reapplied.
Excellent. We won't say who.
All right, uh concluding reports from staff, uh do we have reports from members? Commissioner Augustin.
Um Sarah Augustin here. In KUOW, there is a um feature on Bothell's Forbidden Housing. It looks like everyone's seen it, maybe I'm the last person, but it was great to see.
Did everyone see it? I imagine it got got around.
It's been around.
Okay.
Uh Commissioner Dodd.
Yes, so Commissioner Westerbeck and I got the chance to walk on that tour with um Joshua McNichols from KUOW. It was uh pretty last minute, um so I'm glad we were able to come together and and work on that, and um. What was really great is this didn't happen on our big commission walk, but we actually ran into three uh, four different residents. Um to talk to about the issues, and of course, we were with a journalist who asked really good questions, and it was fascinating to hear their input and everything. Um and featured in the, in the piece, if you have a chance to watch it, is the Mackay family who live in that first duplex that we took away. I'm so sorry, my pets are going nuts. Um I hope you can't hear them, but um it was, it was really, really great just to talk to residents about. Um the state bills that were the focus of the KUOW piece, and also just Missing Middle in Bothell. Um so, and I, and I've heard of a lot of good follow-up conversations on that too, so um if you feel like, um and and. Carrie and I are only quoted each about one time, so there's a lot of other people to hear, because I know you all hear from us quite a bit, but um check it out.
Yeah, contrasts us a bit with with Auburn, uh so different, different uh opinions there. And uh yeah, we got a really rare sunny day. I think it'd been raining for days and it was sunny, like, oh, obviously, it was supposed to be that day. Um and um in fact, uh Joshua emailed me and and said he, looks like he'd been in contact with. With you, Dave, and you, Mike, about their difficulties uh putting a an ADU or tiny house on their property. So he asked me to go back and talk to Bonnie, and um I gave her my card, she hasn't contacted me, so I'm gonna go knock on her door soon and and see. She wants to continue that conversation with you guys.
I, in fact, I was gonna follow up with you um on that area, because we would, we would like to follow up with them as well and find out more about it.
Yeah.
And see if what, you know, what, what the issue was, and if there's a way that we can address that.
Yeah, I said, you know, it's like, I told her I don't have to hire me or anything, I just was curious what her situation was, and I would, I would help her decipher what. What the issues might be, and so obviously, you guys would be great at that uh leading the department. Um she also had, has a family member who has a a vacant lot across the street on the north side of that street. Who wanted to develop something, and I often wondered about that lot and why there wasn't something built there. She said, oh, my brother's uncle or someone like that wanted to develop or sister or something, wanted to develop that and was told they couldn't. I said, oh, it seems interesting, so I might ask about that too. I'm not, I'm not sure if they got good information there.
We always like to look into those a little deeper, um because we have a better, there's often a lot more to the story than just we could do it.
So, no, and I, that's what I thought. I thought, you know, I bet this is developable, but I wonder what the, what the whole up is, and so. I'm not saying the city gave her bad information. I wonder if they just ran into a, maybe a stumbling block and then didn't keep going. But yeah, that was really, that was a good day.
Well, thank you both for uh participating in that. As you see, it did get widely viewed, at least amongst us, so.
Was it, was it just the three of you, or were there others on the walk with you?
It was, uh he, uh Joshua contacted me something like eleven AM that day. And said, can we come out and do the Forbidden Houses tour today? Um I can leave in thirty minutes or something. I said, sure, I can set aside what I'm doing. I had. You know, I always have to work, but I, I work from home here, so anyway, so it was super last minute, so I contacted uh Commissioner Dodd. Um Deputy Mayor, the mayor, um Rep. Doer, all the other people I knew how to get a hold of quickly. And uh Commissioner Dodd was the one person available.
I also work from home in Bothell, so.
We were the flexible ones.
Worked out, and it was just the three of us.
Oh, great. Uh other reports from members? Seeing none, I think that uh there is no further business before us tonight. Uh is there a motion to adjourn the meeting? Commissioner Robson. Is there a second?
I will second motion to adjourn.
Uh it's been moved and seconded that we adjourn tonight's meeting. All in favor?
Hi.
I see all commissioners in favor, so at uh eight twenty this evening. Uh adjourning the February second meeting of the Bothell Planning Commission, our next meeting will be February sixteenth. Hope to see you all then. Thank you all.
You, Russell.
Have a good night.
Night, everyone.
Thank you.